I'd like to welcome you to the Carson City School Trustee Meeting. We're going to start with the adoption of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Mike, second by Laurel. Any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those against? Follow the agenda as presented. Going on to number two, flag salute. Unfortunately, Mr. Cassiopeau had some family obligations, so we're going to have Mike lead us. So if you'll stand and do the pledge allegiance with us, or the flag salute with us.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Moving on to number three, Superintendent's Report for Information Only. Mr. Stokes.
Madam President, members of the board, thank you. With your permission, I'd like to move to the front table and invite our new principal of Carson High School, Mr. Gavin Ward, to join me. Madam President, members of the board, it's my privilege to be joined here with Mr. Gavin Ward. You probably know Mr. Ward. He has served in our school district since the year 2000. He's worked both as a teacher and as an administrator, and most recently has been interviewed and found to be our top choice for the principal role that was vacated by Mrs. Fuson at Carson High School. I am pleased that his family is here tonight. Once school starts, this may be the last they see of him. But we're really pleased with Mr. Ward. He certainly has proven himself as an honorable educator over the years, a man of integrity who works hard for the benefit of our students. And he's held many responsible positions. My interactions with him over time is that he truly wants to do what's right for people. He's very interested that people meet their potential, and he recognizes their worth. And really, when he gives his word that he's going to carry through with something, you can be assured that he'll stop at nothing really until that is accomplished. And so, happy to have Mr. Ward here with us. He and his family are spending a few nights together in a camp trailer up in the beautiful Lake Tahoe area, so we're happy that he was able to join us tonight. So I'd like to turn a little time over to Mr. Ward just to maybe talk a little bit about his vision for the school, some of the things that he knows he'll be working on this year, and certainly to stand for any questions that you might have for him.
Board, I'm Gavin Ward. Boy, I'm super humbled and excited to work at Carson High School. We have the direction we've been going. I really believe we got a great team in place, and I'm super excited to give every student, I want every student to believe that the limits to where they can go are, that there are none. They can, I really want to prepare them for college, I want to prepare them for a career. And I think we have a great team and a great plan, and to continually improve what we're doing at Carson High School is what we want to do on a daily basis. So I'm super excited and humbled to be at Carson High School.
Richard.
I'd just like to welcome you aboard in your new role. We're looking forward to work with you, and you've got some big shoes to fill, but I'm sure you can do that. So welcome into your new position.
Laurel.
Just want to offer my congratulations, and I'm excited to have you as the principal there. I've worked with Mr. Ward on, I have two boys at the high school currently, and next year I'll have three, and so I've worked with him on a variety of different things, and he's always been helpful. And I think it's, I think Carson High is going to continue on its upward trajectory, so glad to have you along.
Lupe.
I also want to say congratulations. I have not had the opportunity to work with you a lot, but I look forward to doing so again to know you more, and again, welcome aboard.
Mike.
So one of the things that most people might not know, but anybody who works with Gavin knows, is he doesn't walk anywhere. So he's always running. And so I think that Carson High School might have a few stairwells worn out by his constant running and jumping around, but I think, you know, Gavin, you have a lot of people who really believe in you, and you have the support of that school, and I think you're going to do great things. So congratulations.
Thank you, Mike.
We go way back, back to middle school days where there were a lot of days I didn't think my kid would get through it. And, sorry, the professionalism, the respect, and just the way you make kids feel like they're number one, and what they're telling you is the truth, they're not making up stories because they're in middle school, was just tremendous. And I'm so excited to have you in this position, and as a Carson High grad, I can only get better from here, and you carry on those traditions. And you have the support of us up here. If there's anything we can do to help you, you let us know. And I am truly grateful that you applied for this and got it, because I have seen in the last 10 years exactly the kind of principal that I would like to see there, and you are definitely that person. So, before we forget, why don't you introduce your family? Because it's true, kids, I'm sorry, your dad's going to be gone. But if he comes to the meetings, you can watch him on TV.
That's a workforce back there. They're going to be with him.
So go ahead and introduce them.
So I'd like to thank my wife for putting up with me all the time, because I'm a pain. And she is super, super supportive of me, and she's the best mom ever, and I couldn't do my job without having her at home. So my wife, Johnlin Ward, stand up, and she's a Carson High grad, 1995, she's a senator. There's very high expectations at Carson High School coming from my wife, and I can't mess it up. The next one line is my oldest son, Reed, stand up Reed. He's 13 years old, he's going into eighth grade. And my next son, Daniel, go ahead and stand up, he's going into seventh grade. And next we have Lauren, she's going into fifth grade. And last but definitely not least is Nev, she's going into fourth grade. And we were talking about applying for this, and I really needed to talk to my family about making this commitment, and wanted to make sure that I put my family first, and we talked about it, we prayed about it, and they were very supportive, and I don't think, I know I could not do it without their support. And so I am truly blessed to have my wife and my kids. And I'm going to, I'm going to work hard like my father, I'm going to do a great job. So I'll give it everything that I can, and I'm super reflective, and I really like the direction that Carson High School is going, the direction that Tasha has taken it, and I believe we're going to get better. And I'm excited to live in the greatest country in the world and be able to prepare these kids for success. And I want them to be able to, whatever it is they choose to do, they have, we give them that foundation so that they can be successful in whatever they choose to do. So I'm honored, and I'm going to work hard.
Good luck, and thank you guys for coming, we appreciate it. And I can't imagine leaving Tahoe in 100-degree weather down here and coming to a school board meeting. So I really do appreciate your time and effort to be here. So thank you so much, and we'll see you and good luck.
Madam President, members of the board, on that high note, that will end my report.
And you guys can get out of here and go back up to the lake.
Make him get you some ice cream, maybe.
Moving on to number four, board reports. Richard.
No report tonight.
Laurel.
I don't have a report for the schools, but for NASB, if there's any kind of training that any of the board members are interested in for our next September meeting and training, please let me know, and we'll take some of those ideas.
And remember, September is in Vegas, and it's a half-day training.
Lupe.
I don't have any report for the schools, but I do want to report that the parent committee from WNC invited Sukima for a little reception to thank her for all of the hard work and programs that she implemented while she was in the school district. And they're just very grateful for the opportunities that she gave to all the students, so it's a very nice reception.
Mike.
No report.
My report would be just to thank the foundation, the Education Foundation, and Mr. Stokes for taking a Saturday morning and taking, we had 15 people from the reunion from 1979 that wanted to go through the high school, and Mr. Stokes, and Steve Reynolds both went with them and hosted, and so it was a great event, so it was pretty exciting. So I thank you for that and your time.
Going on to association reports. Wow, even Loretta's not here. It's a holiday. It is summertime, right? Wow. Okay, moving on to public comment, then. Comments may be made by members of the public on any matters within the authority of this board. Please note that public comment will be taken on items marked for possible action before action is taken in such items, and members of the public are encouraged to comment on such items at the time they are being considered. Although members of the board may respond to questions and discuss issues raised during public comment, no action may be taken on such a matter until the matter is placed on an agenda for the board. In making public comment, speakers are asked to come to the podium, come to the table, speak into the mic, and identify themselves for the record. Speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes and simply not repeat comments of others. Is there any public comment? Come on up. At least, at least the meeting will get interesting, then.
Good evening, my name is Rex Jennings. I'm also a senator, but I graduated from the real Carson High, what is now Carson Middle, so that tells you how old I am. I followed somewhat in the paper and news reports, and maybe I haven't done all my homework, the talk of purchasing the Redemption Church on Snyder Avenue, and talk of turning it into a performing arts school, something. And there's no doubt we need another school.
But that is an agenda item.
Is it?
It is. So we're going to be speaking about that on item number 16. No, 15. 15, right?
16.
16.
17.
16, sorry, sir. We're going to speak at 16, so.
Okay, well, I'll just throw this out there. We still need a voc ed school. Something to think about. We still need welders, electricians, cabinet makers, carpenters. So something to think about, okay? That's all I have.
I couldn't agree with you more after being in the construction agency right now. Moving on to number seven, discussion and possible action on a resolution regarding the financing of school improvements directing the Director of Fiscal Services to notify the Carson City Debt Management Commission of Carson City School District's proposal to issue general obligation bonds in a maximum aggregate principal amount of $40 million, authorizing the Director of Fiscal Services or the Superintendent to arrange for the sale of the bonds and providing the effective date for possible action. Mr. Fueeling.
Good evening, trustees. Andrew Fueeling, for the record. So tonight, we are asking you to consider a resolution to do a number of things related to a bond sale in the near, potentially in the near future. One thing that's really important, just for a point of clarification, and because it gets confusing in some of the conversations I've had prior to the meeting, so I think it's just an important stopping point, is that there's really two, two things happening right now related to bonding. We have a bond refunding that's happening right now, or refinancing past debt for a better rate. We have a bond sale for that scheduled tomorrow, and everything is already taken care of as far as, as far as what you need to do, what we need to do for that. The second thing that's happening is preparations for potentially a new bond sale, for new construction, for renovations, whatever that may be. And what's important as a part of this is that the resolution tonight is regarding that new money, but we have not in any way gone through with the Bond Oversight Committee to determine what the projects are yet. We haven't come to you with their recommendations to say, here are the projects that they would like to see. So what this is, is it really takes care of three things for us, and one of the most important pieces, I should say, three things to prepare us. Everything about this is just getting our ducks in a row to be ready to pull the trigger when that time comes. So one thing is that we have to bring this in front of the Debt Management Commission for approval. They only meet two times per year, and they meet in August, coming up here fairly quickly. So that was one of the reasons we wanted to get this on the table in front of you. When the Debt Management Commission considers a bond, and here it's a bonding amount, the other thing that may have stood out to you is seeing a $40 million number, and that's not a number that we've spoken about. But the idea being that it, over the next three years, if we were to do issuances, and what the Debt Management Commission approves is over three years, they're approving it for over a three-year period, any number of issuances to get to that number is a maximum. And so that, based on numbers, and Mr. Johnson can speak to this a little bit, but based on the numbers, that's likely the largest number we could possibly bond for. So really, it's just setting some cushion for us. It in no way obligates the district to bond for $40 million. It may be that over the next three years, we only bond for five. But we, there is another level of approval that you will have to give, we will have to come back to you when that time comes. So I don't want you to feel like you're authorizing a $40 million issuance tonight. Again, it's just putting it, makes it available, essentially, if that would come to pass. It directs us to arrange for a bond sale, so really, again, if you just think of getting all of our ducks in a row, preparing everything that Mr. Stokes, myself, need to be doing with the help of Mr. Johnson and Mr. Henry to be ready once that time comes. And then the third major piece is Mr. Henry crafted in some language for reimbursement resolution, or reimbursement language into this resolution. So basically, at this point, the kind of outstanding item is with capital Christian. So we're in this due diligence phase where we had to put forth, are we maybe putting forth $50,000? We don't have any bond funds that can do this right now, because we haven't issued bonds, so we'd be taking capital projects money that we currently have and paying for that. At some point in the future, when we do bond, we would be able to pay ourselves back, basically, so that we're not out those capital project funds. So those are the three primary things within this resolution that is being brought to you for consideration this evening. I'm not, if Mr. Johnson or Mr. Henry would like to add anymore?
So for the record, Marty Johnson with J&amp;A Consulting Group, just two things to add to what AJ just said. One is that he talked about the refunding that we have going on, since, of course, we haven't sold those bonds yet, that will happen tomorrow morning. The savings from that refunding are not reflected in the debt service numbers that you see attached to this resolution. So those numbers will be a little bit lower in some of those years, based on what we hope to get out of the refunding tomorrow, and I'm hoping that we do slightly better than $400,000 in savings, which is considerably better than where we would have been two years ago. And then the second thing that, we'll relate to this a little bit, is that when we go to issue bonds, we get a bond rating. We just got the bond rating for the refunding bonds, we had the district's rating of AA2 affirmed. The first thing the rating analyst told me on the phone, and I think this is why I'm doing the report instead of AJ, is that he was very impressed with the district's management. So that isn't a comment I get a lot of times from rating analysts, so recognize that you do have people that are really doing a great job of taking care of the district, and as I think told you at the last meeting, or maybe it was two meetings ago, that is the highest rating of any school district in the state. So you guys are top dog when it comes to credit ratings in the state. One point AJ asked me to mention, too, is that as part of the new funding program for the state, you know, there is going to be this maximum on what a ending fund bounce could be, is 16%. We'll see how that plays out, but that could, you know, depending on how all of this rolls out, could put a little bit of downward pressure on that rating, just because that isn't in what they refer to as their medians for certain credit ratings. You know, so that'll be something that we'll, we'll have to look at, and, you know, not that we can do anything about it, but that's, that may be something that two years from now we are talking about. So, and then just to reiterate something AJ said, and make it very clear, that the approval of the Debt Management Commission is good for 36 months, three years. So like AJ said, we are not looking to issue the whole $40 million all at once, you don't even have to issue the whole $40 million. It just gives you the ability to do up to $40 million in one or more series over the next three years. So with that, I think we'd answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Richard.
No, I would just want to thank AJ for your work in keeping our credit rating so high. Thank you. I know you work hard at it, and we appreciate it.
Yeah, it's one of the things, being in this district, I've always been proud of it, and I always make you bring that up when we're here, because it's quite the accomplishment and talks well about our staff and the direction that this district wants to go, so I do appreciate that. So. Any, any other questions?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the resolution regarding the financing of school improvements, authorizing the Director of Fiscal Services to notify the Carson City Debt Management Commission of the Carson City School District's proposal to issue general obligation bonds in the maximum aggregate principal amount of $40 million, and authorize the Director of Fiscal Services or the Superintendent to arrange for the sale of bonds.
Motion by Laurel, second by Mike. Is there any public comment on this motion? Any more board discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Henry, for coming again. I mean, you just meant a few words. Moving on to number eight, discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy 526, search and seizure, second, search and seizure, second reading for possible action, Mrs. Seer.
Thank you, Madam President, trustees, for the record, Anne Seer. This evening, I have the pleasure of providing the second reading of Policy 526. Is that what we're doing first? Yes, thank you. On search and seizure. There were only very, well, just one minor change that was made to the policy from the first reading, and that was to add some clarification on the seriousness of unauthorized and illegal drugs. We added a reference to controlled substances as well. So the revised policy, 526, on search and seizure reads as follows. The Carson City School District is committed to providing an orderly academic environment for learning that promotes the acquisition of knowledge and advances the free exchange of ideas. The preservation of this educational environment is an important objective for the district. Incidents which jeopardize the health, safety, and welfare of the school community may necessitate the search of students and their property, student use areas, student lockers, and automobiles. Such searches may necessitate the seizure of illegal, unauthorized drugs, or controlled substances, alcohol, devices, or contraband discovered during the search. The board directs the Superintendent to develop regulations setting forth the circumstances and procedures required to be followed in the search of students and their property, student use areas, student lockers, and the student automobiles, and any resulting seizure of any evidence found. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, comments? Laurel.
I'm just reading that with the addition and the correction of it, and I'm wondering, where is the, and I'm looking at illegal, wondering what is it that it's referring to? Is it referring to, is it describing unauthorized drugs or controlled substances, or is it also describing devices or contraband? So that's where I was playing with it, going, I'm not, I'm not sure where to put commas in that, because I want it to be clear, because I'm guessing illegal unauthorized also would apply to devices. Any thoughts or clarity on that?
If we took out the or, do you think that would?
Illegal unauthorized drugs or controlled substances, alcohol. What is the legal, I mean, because illegal to me, as it reads...
Do you need a colon?
No, I don't think you need a colon. I think if you take out the or, that would help, but I'm wondering, as I'm reading it, it's illegal unauthorized drugs. Control, if you took out the comma, it'd be illegal unauthorized drugs or controlled substances, and those two, illegal unauthorized, would go to those two, and then you'd have alcohol, devices, or contraband.
That's the easiest way to fix it.
Get rid of the comma? Okay. That's what we're going to do.
Any other comments? Seeing none.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve July 23, 2019, as a revised date for CCSD Policy 526, search and seizure with the noted edits.
Second. Thank you.
Motion by Mike, second by Lupe. Any other discussion by the board? Seeing none, any public comment on this policy? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Moving on to number nine, discussion and possible action to approve proposed elimination of CCSD Policy 360, workman's comp compensation, and CCSD Policy 425, industrial compensation, and the action to approve proposed Policy 1050, workman's compensation, occupational injury or disease in section 1000, all staff second reading for possible action. Mrs. Seer, again.
Thank you. There are no changes to this policy from the first reading, so if you don't have any questions.
Anybody have any questions?
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve July 23, 2019, as the elimination date for CCSD Policy 360, workers' compensation, and CC, am I reading the wrong one?
No.
Okay. And CCDSD Policy 425, industrial compensation, and approve July 23, 2019... And CCDSD Policy 425, industrial compensation, and approve July 23, 2019, as the adopted date for CCSD Policy 1050, workers' compensation slash occupational injury or disease.
Motion by Richard, second by Laurel. Any other board discussion? Any public, public comment on this policy? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion or policy approved? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 10, discussion on proposed changes to CCSD Policy 218, internet safety and internet acceptable use, first reading for discussion only. Raymond, welcome. Glad you're here.
Good evening, President and members of the board. I'm here to present policy, do I have to hold this button in? No, I don't. Okay, perfect. Here to present Policy 218, the, this is the first, first time presenting on it, so I think it has to go through twice, but I just wanted to point out that some items that were changed in here, or some of the items that were changed in here were to reflect current terminology changes in the industry, and to allow, there's a statement, the second, one, two, the third paragraph down, where it says this policy and any implementing regulations are intended to comply with applicable state or federal law. So that was added to allow flexibility within the policy, to allow our staff members and employees to be able to adjust to any changes in law without violating the policy, until the policies were changed. And then the last paragraph, there were terms, updated terms added with information and communications technology and XaaS, meaning the delivery of anything as a service. And those are, I think you guys have this in your packet, so I don't know if you guys have any questions, or want to take a moment to read through.
Any questions, Laurel?
I just had a couple things I noticed. In the second paragraph, use of district ICT shall be in alignment with the district's strategic plan, comply with, and be, but because we use shall not be used, we use shall be in alignment, I think what we should do is have a comma and say, shall be in alignment with the district's strategic plan, comma, shall comply with applicable provisions of the state and federal law and regulations, comma, and shall not be used to transmit information in violation of any applicable law or regulation. And then it gets a little bit messy, because it seems a little long, so I'm not sure if you want to make a second sentence out of that to do it, or the information that is being transmitted, if you want to say, because it just seems to run on. So I don't know if you want to put a period in a new sentence to clear it up, or you could say transmit information which is in violation of any applicable law or regulation, or which is bullying, obscene, or disruptive to the educational purchases or processes of the district. So those, those would be ways to fix that, or maybe break it into two sentences.
Okay, thank you. We'll go back and, or go back and rework that section and try to make it more, try to clarify it.
And then one more, sorry, in the third, no, the fourth paragraph, I don't think you need a dash, I think you can just delete it after the term information and community, communications technology includes, I don't think you need to have a dash there.
Okay, I'll, I'll go ahead and remove that as well.
Any other discussion or comments? Okay. Thank you for updating that, and we will see you at the second reading.
All right, thank you.
And stay put, because you're on number 12, too. Number, you've got a couple here, sorry, Raymond. Number 11, discussion on proposed changes to CCSD Regulation 218, internet safety and internet acceptability used to include revised acknowledgement, agreement, signature pages for students and staff for discussion only.
Okay, so this is Regulation 218, that goes along with Policy 218 that we just discussed. Inside of this, the format was reworked a little bit. We added clarification around what an authorized user is, also added definitions to clarify some of the terms, including ICT, information and communications technology, and defined or clarified appropriate storage locations for student information, and identified the protection of PII, personally identifiable information for students in here as well. So there is, that has also been added.
So I don't know if this is a question for, it's probably a question for Mr. Stokes. The provision, just if an employee doesn't turn in their computer by the date, whatever the date is, that their paycheck is withheld, is that in compliance with our negotiated agreements and whatnot?
Thank you, Mr. Walker, for the question. Typically, that has only ever been an issue if the person is, is leaving the school district. So it, if we need to add?
So if I, as a teacher, decided I forgot to turn in, went on vacation, I'm not gonna have my paychecks withheld while I'm out of the country or something?
No, that certainly wouldn't be the intent, and we can work on that language.
I think the intent is to prevent theft, somebody just leaving with the property and never returning it.
And I guess I have a question related to that as well, because I know for like the honors students and those taking AP classes, because they have summer coursework, they're allowed to keep their devices over the summer. When teachers and staff have work that they need to do, or they're, they're doing some work over the summer, how often do they have that ability to keep their devices, or is it pretty standard that everyone turns them in?
Actually, anymore, it's fairly standard that they keep them over the summer, because they're primarily laptops and mobile devices. It is truly up to the, the site administrator, we leave it up to the principals to decide. Sometimes we do demand that they, they leave the devices, because we have to do updates, security, things like that to them, and then we'll notify them that that's complete and hand it back to them, which is what we did this year at the high school.
Thanks. And then one other thing, just on the first paragraph, after the first sentence that ends in FERPA, there's not a period before the next sentence.
Thank you.
And I also noticed on the second paragraph, on the second line, where it says are used on and off, on is bold and off is not.
I think that's because on and is the addition, and off was previously in the.
Okay, okay.
Any other comments or discussion on this?
No, this is kind of a minor point. On the first paragraph, on the one, two, three, four, five, six, seventh line down, where it says and services should be used in a responsible, ethical, and legal manner, I wonder if we'd make a stronger statement by saying shall. You know, should is kind of a polite way of saying the same thing, but shall is more of a direct assertion that that's what you want done, so.
That's, that's a good point. I think I would refer to Mr. Petalakis and kind of provide, provide me some legal guidance in that area.
I think that's a point well taken. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to number 12, informational update from the Carson City School District Department of Information Technology.
Okay, so this is a kind of a high level, just kind of informational overview of kind of some of the things that we've been working on in technology, things that we've accomplished in our projects we have in flight. I don't, we're warming up the presentation here.
Maybe we really do need to look into our technology budget. Maybe we've cut a little too deep here, AJ.
All right, so again, this is the Carson City School District State of Technology presentation. So I think over the, over the years, technology has really, has really evolved. It's really become critical to the daily teaching, learning, and operational functions of the school district. And without it, it seems like, you know, if we don't have that triple nine or 99.9% uptime, we all wish it was 100, but that's, you know, that's a, that's a tall, a tall order to, you know, for nothing to go down. So, you know, it has really evolved over the years, and, and it's just been so, so core. So I like to think of us as building digital learning environments. It's really more inclusive of what we do with the devices that we offer, the infrastructure services that we provide, and all the, of the technical support, integration support, the, the learning platforms that we've spun up and put in place, and delivered over to educational services, and our other, you know, awesome educators to actually then instruct on, so. Next slide. So our department is pretty much broken up into four kind of functional areas. We have our operations and infrastructure section, our technology support, or technical support, technology integration, and then of course, our administrative assistant. And in this, as you can see in the graphic, student achievement and success are at the center. The ring around the outside of that is our teachers that, that worked for that student achievement and success, and then the ring outside of that is the staff and administration that then again, supported teachers. And outside of that are all of our core areas that support all of those folks from within, in the hopes that student achievement and success are achieved. And this is, this graphic, I have to give props to Josie Payne. This is a graphics design student from Carson High School. I provided them with a bunch of chicken scratch, and just kind of a design concept, and they did a great job just making, turning it into this, into this beautiful graphic. So in 2018, 19, so last school year, our support staff was, was laid out like this. We had one lead network support technician, we had five network support tech, network support technicians, one system engineer, one network engineer, and three technology integration specialists. Those are TOSA's. And then in the box below, the one professional development strategist, and the two WNR PDP professional learning facilitators. Those are actually state employees that are housed within our district. So we do take advantage of those folks for training and the services that they provide, but they are state employees, so they roam regionally to other districts as well. But their work effort under technology is, they're, they're put here because a lot of their work is under the technology umbrella. So moving forward, next year, some of the positions have changed. We still have one lead network support technician, we lost one of our network support technicians. And these positions that were lost were due to the funding loss of Nevada Ready 21. So folks have been really helping me out with grants, trying to, trying to retain folks. So we were down to three network support technicians, one got picked up just recently under a grant that Valerie is currently working on. We have one system engineer still, one network engineer, and one technology integration specialist who is a TOSA, which was moved out of general fund into a grant as well. So we were able to retain that position. Underneath, we lost the professional development strategist, but again, that was a state position that was housed under the, under, under the school district. So because of Nevada Ready 21, sunsetting, that position went away. But we still have the two NWR PDP positions.
Before we move on, could I ask, on the three TOSA's, are they all grant funded? The technology integration specialist?
So we have one this year, and they're grant funded.
So they lost those two, then they had, okay.
We lost the, the other two. Last year, we had one that was on general fund, and the others were grant funded.
All right, thank you. I wasn't following you, I guess.
And then, so this is kind of some, it's an overview of some of the equipment that we have in the district. This is a data communications closet at the high school, the image on the right. So within our district, we have two redundant firewalls, we have 14 routers, 182 managed switches, 572 wireless access points. All that equipment requires management, monitoring, and programming. That's our network layer. On our server layer, we have 45 physical servers, 85 virtuals, for a total of 130 servers to support all of the learning and instruction and district operations that we do in the district.
So going back to your staff, so there's one person that did, does all that stuff in the, the first slide, and then there's one person that does all this stuff in this slide?
So, so the job descriptions are network engineer and systems engineer. However, they are, they cross over, so they kind of help out each other. So they do help each other out when demand is high on the network side and demand is high on the server side, they kind of switch back and forth. But yes, there's two of them that do all of this.
And what's, on the previous slide, the WAPs, WAPs, I don't know what that is.
So those are, I'm sorry, those are wireless access points?
Oh.
So that allows for the, for the student devices and teacher devices to connect. All right, in that image there is the district NOC, or Network Operations Center, at the district office. There, there are communications racks and data racks like this scattered across, they're actually in every single school. This is, just happens to be the one at the district office. And our security and surveillance system, this is, this is the video wall over at the high school, that they use to monitor really any campus, because it's all network equipment. But we also manage 232 security cameras, 42 security switches, and 14 security servers to operate the entire district-wide surveillance system. And this is one of our communications racks, actually at the high school as well. This is for our voice and analog and digital voice communications. So we have 255 IP phones, 796 analog phones, 59 voice switches, and three voice servers that we manage to keep the voice communications up and running. And then our user technology includes 981 laptops, 1,881 desktop computers, 7,200 Chrome Bucks, total of 10,062 endpoints or user devices that are, that are managed and supported. And then down below that, I won't read all of that, but that's all peripheral devices that you find in the classroom printers, dock cams, projectors, and that kind of stuff. That's all the other instructional technology. And so here is a list of some of the resources that we use within the district. I'm not going to go through every single one, but I just kind of wanted to give you kind of like a highlight of, of, of some of the ones that, that we use, and give you an idea of the vast array of them that we manage or support in some way, shape, or form. So we have a list, we have IBOS, which is our filtering system, mail meter, legal archiving, Microsoft Exchange, that's our email system, web control, building automation, that's for our HVAC systems, climate control. We have Moss 360, that's a, a new add, that's for our tablet management. Pure Storage, that's our storage array for our 100 and some odd virtual, or 80 some odd virtual servers, I think it was. But there's a whole list of, and some of these are classroom as well, so TCI, keyboarding without tears. There's, yeah, they got interesting names. Read and Write. And then there's, the list continues, and there's actually, I didn't list them all, but there's 160 more that we know of that are used within the district, that are managed or supported in some way, shape, or form by us. A little overview on Nevada Ready 21, the program started in 2015, it did sunset in, at the end of June in 2019. The, the funding for that program was $851,619. That was paid for by the state. So of course, when that sunsetted, we had to make adjustments and, and decisions around what we wanted to keep and what we could let go, because we couldn't absorb that whole amount in our general fund. So of that, the breakdown is below, we have $418,000 roughly for staffing, $429,000 for the computers and the associated web-based applications, and the miscellaneous expenses of $3,000, $3,500. Out of the, out of those expenses, we did retain the cost for the devices, but that is, I think that ran about $160,000, $170,000, am I on target on that, AJ? Okay, so I think it's about $160,000, $170,000 for the devices. Everything else was dropped or picked up by those grants that we had talked about, some of those employees. So the Nevada Ready 21 program goals, according, you know, from their, and I pulled this right from the department's website, it says the ultimate outcome is to produce creative, self-directed, information-savvy collaborators. But on top of, and we were, we were one-to-one before Nevada Ready 21, so you know, some of the additional benefits that, that we noticed, you know, outside of, of what they've identified as their goals, is our ability to deliver personalized learning experiences to each students, to differentiate the instruction to each student, fostering student-centered learning, building 21st century school, uh, 21st century school, sorry, 21st century skills in our students, creative learning outlets through multimedia, for example. for example, they're, they're able to express their learning in, in new and creative ways. A reduction in the digital equity gap. And we look at the digital equity gap, the Pew Research Center chart there on the right shows that, uh, the lower your income, you know, the, the less likely you are to own, possess, uh, technology in your household. So by providing these, these devices to our students, we pretty much eliminate that gap for our students. We also provide hotspots to eliminate the broadband gap at home, to allow them internet access. So, and that's, that's something I think is critical for a district that is so, um, reliant on technology and whose learning resources are very technology-enhanced and technology-based. We have to be able to provide our students with access to the internet and, and the device to do their work on. And we also noticed there's an increase in student engagement. And I think, uh, most administrators are happy about this, the shorter testing windows. I think we went from, in some schools, we're up to like six weeks maybe for their S-Back testing window, um, standardized testing window. And they've shortened that down. We've worked through creative scheduling, I should, I, I say we, but really it's the, it's the school and their administration, they worked through creative scheduling and, uh, got it down to maybe two weeks. And last year, Eagle Valley actually did it in two days. So that was a substantial decrease in the amount of time, which means there's a huge gain in instructional time. So as part of the Nevada Ready 21 program, um, we were required to do what's called a Bright Byte survey. And this is a perception-based survey and it's based on four domains called the case framework. You can see it in the, in the blue area, outline that circle there. So it's access, or classroom access, skills, and environment. Each one of those domains has subcategories, and we'll come back to those. But, um, the, it was, uh, who participated in this was, uh, 4,127 students and 433 teachers and administrators. So that's kind of your, uh, sampling base. So here's some of the, um, information that we gathered from those, uh, from those surveys that, that were distributed to our staff and students. Um, this is the elementary group. So in the elementary group, and, and I'll point out at the bottom in the legend, what we're trying to shoot for is proficient, advanced, or exemplary. We're trying to avoid beginning and emerging. So as you can see, there's only one area up there that is in the emerging section, so there's some room for growth there. But if you also notice, the, under the classroom domain there, you'll see that those are the lowest scores, lowest grouping of scores in, in, um, in all of the rows and columns. So that, that's the lowest score per school, and it's also pretty much the lowest score for the whole column. All right, so these, this is the middle school survey comparison. And middle schools had additional resources injected into them through Nevada Ready 21, which I think was a direct result of why they're in a better position here. You can see that most of the areas at the middle schools are advanced and exemplary, and I kind of, and I attribute that to the additional resources in the, in the form of staff that were pushed into Carson Middle School to support the teachers, their technology issues, their instructional integration. Um, I think they had a big part to do with boosting those numbers. But again, you'll notice that, uh, the classroom area is the lowest grouping of numbers in that, um, in the middle schools as well. Moving over to the high school, high schools, I should say. They are provision, they are proficient, advanced, and exemplary in, in all areas. But again, the classroom area, if you notice, the numbers are, um, are low. So the classroom domain seems to be the, the biggest area of growth for us. Growth opportunity.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So classroom, that's the number of computers in the classroom? Or is that the number of respondents?
So, classroom is, is a grouping of, uh, so the participants would answer questions. The questions map back to the subcategories, which you can see, um, next to the classroom domain there. The 4Cs, digital citizenship, assessment, and assistive technology. So those, those areas collectively make up that classroom score? Yes, exactly. All right, so of those areas, uh, classroom was the lowest. And we're going to dive in a little bit into those subcategories real quick. And of those subcategories, you can see they're listed across the top, 4Cs, assessment, assistive technology, and digital citizenship. The really low areas are, or the lowest areas, I should say, are the teachers' use of the 4Cs. And then digital citizenship has a few emerging areas as well. So those are areas that we're going to be working on to kind of boost those up and help, uh, help support our teachers in those areas. In addition to what we've identified through the survey, teachers have self-identified these top three areas that they would like professional development on. It's online tools for critical thinking, multimedia skills, and classroom management with technology. So to close those gaps, what we've done is we've shifted our professional development support model to more of a blended model. We've moved from primarily centralized to, um, more of site-based. So with that model, we're able to, um, our technology integration specialist is able to push into the classrooms, personalize PD for each individual teacher, meet them where their needs are. It's more inclusive, timely, and relevant that way. When we're onsite and scheduled basis, weekly, bi-weekly, or twice a month kind of a thing. Uh, the schedule is still being worked out, I believe, but it, it, I think it works out to be for the most part every week that technology integration specialist is onsite to support with job-embedded PD. Um, also, research shows that that model is more effective than a sit-and-get or a centralized model. But because centralized model does have benefits, um, we have kept that around, so that's why it's kind of a blended deal. Centralized model, uh, includes like tech cafe, traditional PD days. Uh, those types of events foster the cross-pollination of ideas, concepts, um, and collaboration between sites. So it crosses boundaries and they're able to take back things that work very effectively in theirs, in, in other schools, back to their school and use it that way. Also, it's good for group PD. So anytime you have a large group where everybody's starting from the same point, basically this, it's a new, say it's a new, um, new techno, new learning platform, for instance, everybody's starting from the same baseline, that's when group PD work is very effective. And then after that point, you gotta kind of start to have, having to differentiate to each person's needs 'cause they're all going to be at a different place. And then reworking our PD opportunities to include the 4Cs and digital citizenship within them. So those are things that we're doing to try to, um, fill those gaps that we just talked about. So 2018-2019, I'm gonna shift gears and go over to our technical support requests. We had 1,425 reported, um, technical support requests. However, I, this isn't really what's been reported. I can tell you that you could probably double that at least to get a more accurate number because a lot of requests are put in through informal channels. So you'll get hallway conversation, you'll get stopped in the hallway, you'll get emails or phone calls. But, um, I did want to, want to show you guys, um, you know, some information about the technical support requests. So this is what's been reported. The high school is our, uh, it ki- it kind of works down from our biggest school to kind of more of our smaller schools. The high school is the biggest, so it has quite a few, um, technical support requests. Carson Middle is next, and then Boarderwick, and so on and so forth.
So have you worked out a way because you've cut staff now and this number's only going to go up? Have you have some plan in, of how that's going to work? Because you took out two technicians, aren't they the ones that would be dealing with a lot of?
We took out one technician. One of the things that, um, I'm able to work with, I have a little more flexibility this upcoming year. Last year, two technicians were assigned to the two middle schools. That's what the grant required. And I couldn't pull them, even though they may not, may or may not have had a full workload there, I couldn't pull them to use them at other schools. So this year, I'll be able to move resources around as needed without those grant limitations. So I, I think that's going to help us out greatly. So some of the 2018-2019 highlights. So our student technician program, we, this is our second year doing it. Um, it has seemed to be pretty successful over there, I would say. The, the students love it, we had six students that participated. They, they walk around with, uh, Mr. Mendoza, or they go out by themselves and solve, um, they troubleshoot, problem solve, research, and they, uh, fix hardware and software problems. So i- it's really a kind of a self-supporting system over there where you have students helping other students and helping, um, helping teachers even solve problems. And of course, they're using 4Cs here, uh, to, learning 21st century skills. They're collaborating, communicating, using critical thinking and creativity to, to solve all the technology problems that they encounter. So moving over to capital projects, uh, PH, this is an image of, uh, Pi- Pioneer High School before the construction, uh, finished over there. So that's obviously done now, but, um, I just wanted to kind of go over some of the things that we did. We engineered and, we engineered the wired and wireless network over there, installed a structured copper and fiber cabling. We, the PA systems now run over the network. So that was something that we were involved in, and of course, the security system as well. Uh, CHSCMS and EVMS, their network infrastructure was, was upgraded, which I think greatly enhanced, uh, the students' testing experience this, this last year. Like I said, Eagle Valley was, eh, they're down to two days of testing now, and they wouldn't have been able to do that before. So the 2019 NDOE Mega Conference, um, this was, uh, this was, this was quite an honor for us. Um, the, every year, the Department of Education has a different theme for Mega Conference. This year, it was expanding equitable opportunities for all students. And Liz Isaacs, Liz Isaacs just to the left of the, of the, of the, um, board up there. She led a, a, a team of just outstanding educators who showcased how Carson City, um, School District uses technology to, um, provide equitable learning opportunities for all students. And so they, they went up there, actually teamed up with Clark County School District and did a joint presentation around, um, you know, a model or a exemplary way of using technology with, uh, students for, um, you know, that have visually impaired or, you know, all of the different, different type of disabilities or learning disabilities that they might have, to overcome those using technology to equalize that out. So Read and Write was one of the products that they used, or that they presented on, and that's what, one of the products that we use in our school district. So that's text-to-speech, that's one example of a product that, um, you know, used to, to help, um, expand equitable opportunities. All right, another, uh, switching over to Digital Learning Day. So Digital Learning Day was, uh, was, was really fun, actually. We had several students and, and teachers go over to the legislature, and they were there to, um, to advocate for, for technology in their schools. And, um, to actually not only advocate for it, but to demonstrate it. So they were, they were on the floor, right there in front of the legislator, um, building, or in the front of the legislator building, I should say. They were coding robots, they were doing video production. They were, um, there was a student from Carson Middle that actually built his own drone, and he was flying it around the grounds. The students interviewed state policymakers. I don't know if you guys have seen the video, but Dan did a great job, um, putting that together. And so, um, so yeah, that was a, that was a, that was, that was a fun event, and it was a, is, it was a, um, time where we could showcase kind of what our students could do. So, um, Innovation Box, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with this. We started this about, um, a year ago. And what it is, is what we're trying to do is harvest ideas from our staff members. What we thought is, um, how can we, how could we do something to, to collect great ideas that our staff members have? So we put together this form, put it on our website, and, um, advertised it. And we've, we've really only gotten a few responses at this point, so I'm hoping people are watching, or if you guys know people, um, you might be able to kind of spread the word. But, um, if they submit their idea through this, uh, form, uh, we kind of look at them for primarily learning impact. Uh, we want to make sure that it's tied to learning, of course. And then, uh, feasibility, um, and it, and it, it doesn't have to be learning, it could be something on, on the operations side of the house, so it could be an efficiency gain as well. Um, and then what we do is we help those people take that through decision-making channels. We, we remove barriers, we help them integrate and, and implement it. And this, this particular, um, this is our first one that we did. So Jennifer Allen, she is a third grade, uh, Mark Twain teacher. And what she wanted to do, and, and these are her, these are quotes from, um, what she submitted and sent to us. She wanted to transform student learning and take it to the next level. And I have a little short snippet of a video that her class did.
Balanced forces is when equal forces act against each other and it does not cause motion to change.
So what they were, this is just a short little part of it, but what they were doing was trying to demonstrate what they learned about equal forces, unequal forces, fast motion, slow motion. Um, and they were able to take that and express that in a creative, in a creative way. So it was just a different, different way for them to express. And, and it was, it was hugely engaging. I was actually over there watching it and it was great to see. So what we did is, um, what we did is provide her with the multimedia equipment, um, and the means to, to produce the video, and then she did all the magic from there with, with, with her teaching, of course. Um, and the outcome of that, in, in, in her words, was, um, students were beyond excited to show what they learned. I can honestly say I had 100% participation and I knew they were invested in their own learning. So those all seem like positives to me, so I was excited to, uh, I was excited to hear that. You know, that she had such a positive outcome from that. But those are the things we're trying to do, is we're trying to, um, help teachers do these types of things in their classroom. And so this was the first one that we did. I have one submission so far for this year. I'm hoping to get, you know, a lot more folks, so, um, hopefully people are watching. So quick roadmap moving forward. Network utilization for all of our schools. Um, the utilization, as you can see on the left, highlighted in green, 80, 90, 100%, those, when you start getting over 60, 70, probably 70%, you want to start looking at, at, at upgrading. This kind of snuck up on us 'cause of the, the rapid adoption of technology-enhanced learning last year that Mrs. Kima did. So all of those additional technology resources consume quite a bit of our bandwidth. So what we are doing this summer is upgrading our equipment in our WAN circuits, all the way up to our internet service providers, so we can improve our, our bandwidth capabilities to support all of the additional technology-enhanced learning that's, that's been put into the district. And what we'll end up with in, um, this upcoming school year is a much higher, much higher bandwidth at each location and a much higher student bandwidth. And the estimated utilization should drop to somewhere around 50, under 50%, which is a much better position and allows room for growth. Other projects that are in flight, uh, nutrition, um, nutrition services is putting in a whole new nutrition system, so we're assisting them with that. Fremont, Mark Twain, and Sea Lover, construction projects are almost closed up. Once we get authorization to go into those buildings, we'll start putting in, um, all the technology necessary for classrooms in there. The router upgrades for the six elementary schools are, um, about to get put in as well as the core switch upgrades of the six elementary schools. That'll increase capacity, uh, 10 times at those schools. So there will be equivalent to basically where the secondaries are now, where the middle and the high schools are. So that should greatly improve their testing experience as well. New staff computers for, um, Sea Lover, Empire, and Boarderwick have been built, and they're being sent out now, there's 118 units there. Computer science curriculum rollout, board docs. That is something that actually Renee and I are working on to try to, um, clean up our policies that are listed on our website. What that will do is it'll allow us to be ADA complying with that. It will allow our community to tran- translate that into multiple languages, the policies and the regs. And it'll allow, uh, simple searching as well. So if somebody searches for, uh, cyber, cyberbullying or bullying, it will bring up every policy and reg that has that in it versus going out and trying to hunt and find the policy and then search through the individual policies or regs. So it's, it's much more user-friendly. We're working on deploying 1,300 student Chromebooks to sixth and ninth grade students, 80 new digital display installs and setups for, uh, 80 classrooms across the districts, or across the district. Uh, upgrading our, all of our Windows 7 computers, those go end of life in, in, I think it's January 14th, maybe? So we got to get everything upgraded by then. So we have 250 of those, we're upgrading to Windows 10, that's almost done. And then this is interesting, um, there was a joint, uh, so Google, COSIN, Kajit joined together, and they created a project called the Rolling Study Hall. You guys may have heard, um, some stuff about this, but, uh, we are part of the 2019 National Cohort, which includes only five districts. And I was contacted by, uh, by Google and COSIN and went through a series of, um, of, of interviews, and they, they ended up, um, liking what we were doing here in our district, and they accepted us. And so what, what the project is, is it's, what they're going to do is And so what, what the project is, is it's, what they're going to do is outfit three to five of our bus routes or our buses with wireless. So all of our buses, or I shouldn't say all of our buses, three to five of them will have Wi-Fi capability. They are also going to provide a ride-along tutor, assuming we can fill that position. But they're also going to provide funding for that. They're going to provide the equipment and the Wi-Fi service, so it's fully funded by Google. This is something that uh, that I'm working with them on and it's still um, very much in the early process, but. It, it seemed, it seemed like a really exciting opportunity to extend learning outside of the four walls of the classroom and to be able to provide our students with the opportunity to learn while they're on those longer bus rides or while they're going to athletic events.
That was my question.
That was my question because I, I was going to ask, is this going to be regular routes home from school? Or I know that's, any of the kids that travel to athletic events are trying to do their assignments on the rides there, so.
Right, so these, these buses can be, can be used for the athletic events. So their primary purpose is for those bus routes, but of course, the Transportation Director can adj- adjust the buses accordingly when, when they're not needed for that.
When the choir's going on a long trip and they need something.
Exactly, so this will allow students to um, be able to do their schoolwork.
What are the other four districts that are in that, you know?
They did not disclose that to me. Uh, they're kind of on a tight non-disclosure kind of a thing. They, I, they did authorize me to provide this information to the board because I was like, I gotta be able to tell the board what, what's going on here. Feels kind of shady not doing that, so I, I kind of wanted to do that. And so they authorized me to, to provide the information, but they wouldn't, they're not going to, they didn't tell me who the other four districts were. So um. Sorry, I like my little moving bus. Uh, inter, so goals moving forward, interoperability. That is going to be a huge benefit to the school district. Interoper, what interoperability is, is basically the ability for our systems to communicate with each other, transfer information between each other. It reduces redundancy in um, work effort. Teachers don't have to, wouldn't have to put in grades in multiple systems, that kind of thing. It should consolidate all of that information. So our, the goal is to work towards interoperability. And uh, Project Unicorn is really uh, leading the charge there in the education sector. And if you follow this uh, this video here, under the coalition, you'll see a uh, a familiar logo. As part of the, part of the uh, coalition. So our, our goal is to work towards um, interoperability with all of our systems. And that is to create a more complete view of each student, a better understanding of, of individual and aggregated learning outcomes, to empower staff with the information they need to make those data-driven decisions. To be able to move data between systems securely and for a flexible, scalable, and sustainable data architecture. So the next steps there are going to be to um, we, we're going to work on add, adding interoperability requirements to our evaluation process of our learning platforms. Work within the Department of Education to integrate the EDFI Open Standard, which isn't, which is a interoperability standard. There's been a, a lot of movement on this, so I'm pretty confident that the Department of Ed is going to move forward with that. And there's a lot of push from other districts as well, I think Clark is on board, so that really helps out. And then pro- program and establish communication interfaces between our systems and provide staff training and support, of course. Data privacy is the next um, area that, the next goal that we want to work on, improving that area. I'm sorry, I'm trying to flip through these slides a little faster here, I know I'm running out of time. So student data privacy obviously is important. We want to uh, build and maintain our community trust and we need to be compliant with state and federal law. And another big one is the average cost of a data breach incident is two hundred and forty-six dollars per student record, which will equate to about one point nine million in our case. So um, would like to avoid paying any of those fees. Uh, next steps for that would be to um, into our evaluation process, again, um, put in place these privacy requirements. Build a repository of vetted applications for our staff to use that have been privacy-vetted. Establish privacy agreements with our service providers. Some of them are, we're starting to do that already, a lot of those are in place, but we have additional work to do there. Uh, data governance practices, put, putting some of those in place around policies and regulations to um, support student data privacy and protect that information. And then um, COSIN has a, what's called Trusted Learning Environment National Standard, which is kind of providing us guidance to follow as we go through, down this path. And then of course, staff training. And this is what um, this is our vetted app list. So this is kind of what, this is what teachers will be seeing when they, and they return back for the school year. It's a list of privacy-vetted applications, it has privacy policy and term links. When they're added, what grade levels they're approved for, for, and any, and any contracts that are associated with that um, learning resource. This is also a requirement under the new um, SB four oh nine, I think it is. The state data privacy law that they just passed this last session. Uh, one of the requirements is to publicly post the resources that you use, as well as the laws that apply to data privacy into your district. The terms and conditions of the learning resource and any contracts associated with them. So um, actually, I don't think the contracts are required, but terms, um, privacy terms are. And uh, to list applications for transparency with parents, guardians, community. And then of course, cybersecurity, that's a hot topic. Uh, I don't know if you guys are aware, but Lyon County just had an incident. Um, and it took their system down, I think it was for like, three weeks now. It's still down? It's still down, so it has a potential to have a huge impact on teaching, learning, and district operations. So it, they've had an, they had an incident, it's been down for three weeks now. So we definitely want to boost our um, cybersecurity posture within our district and prevent that from happening. We have those, these happening all the time, we've been able to successfully defend them at this point. This particular one came in from China. They um, attempted to shut down our network earlier in the school year. They were not successful, it did slow the network down, but it did not, um, it did not stop operations. So of course, with cybersecurity, we're, we're talking about community trust, state and federal law compliance. And again, um, expense to the district, the potential cost per incident is three hundred thousand to, two million per incident. And it is a huge impact to, potential impact to teaching, learning, and operations. The next steps on this would be to, what we're going to do is follow the National Institute of Standards and Technology cybersecurity framework. That's going to be our, kind of our, our guiding light as we work through this. Build formal policies and regulations, there's a lot of informal things going on right now, but we want to kind of formalize that and strengthen it. And then align our practices with uh, our cybersecurity insurance requirements and address any issues identified by our independent security audits. We had an audit done a short while ago by the Department of Homeland Security, we're waiting for the results of that back. I suspect a lot of it will be around access control, but there should be some other things in there that we'll, we'll need to work on addressing.
Are you working with Polpak then, on some of that?
Polpak was a, a separate independent audit, but we have worked with Polpak to do a, a security audit and we did implement the changes that, mo- most of the changes that they requested are that they had identified. The ones that weren't implemented were a huge burden on the learning environment. So we had, we kind of made the, the decision that, that, you know, we had an appetite for that. Just because there was such a negative impact to learning, we decided not to move forward with that fix.
And they might be a good resource for policy, when you're writing these policies too.
Oh, for writing the policies?
Yeah.
Yeah, we, uh, definitely Polpak is a resource for us, so we can leverage them. Alright, any comments, questions, feedback?
Mike?
You know, I would just say, you know, one of the things I think that's a little bit shocking is, you know, you rely on technology, but you don't realize how interconnected it all is until something like this happens. And literally, all communication has been lost. So no telephone, no internet, no emails. And so imagine your entire summer going through that district-wide and you're trying to fill positions and communicate open positions and important information you need to get out to staff members. It's, it's a true concern and I think that if anything, it's really opened my eyes to how much we truly rely on technology. And I think that we'd be well-served to be ahead of the curve on that.
I agree.
Richard?
Are you going to be here at the end of the program or the board meeting when we discuss the purchase of the Snyder property?
Uh, yes.
Okay, because I have a question about that, so I'll wait until then.
Anyone else? Lupe?
Extremely informative, thank you so much for all, all that information.
You're welcome.
I'm trying to figure out how you do it with the staff that you have, that's just incredible.
It, it's, it's a, it's a struggle to get it done, it's an amazing staff. They are, they are just um, you know, they're just amazing folks to work with and dedicated and will, you know, willing to put in that extra mile to help our staff and students, so. Uh, I have my hats off to them for all the great work that they do.
And please take that back to them, that the board is very impressed and we thank them for their services too. We do, really do appreciate it with the staff that you have.
Absolutely, I will do that, thank you.
Thank you for the update, we really do appreciate, we're looking forward to see what happens with the school bus thing. Not at that security level, they could tell me, but then they'd have to kill me. Moving on to number fourteen, discussion and possible action to, thirteen. Discussion and possible action to approve proposed changes to CCSD Policy five one eight, drug, alcohol use and abuse, second reading for possible action, Mrs. Fushon.
Thank you, Madam President, Tasha Fushon for the record. We had our first reading of Policy five eighteen, Drug, Alcohol Use and Abuse during the July ninth uh, board meeting. There were very few recommendations or requests made by the board, so those are indicated on the policy in your packet in red. The first one was in the first paragraph, um, it was just requested that we change the, the term chemicals to be what is, what is more legally common as illegal drugs, so that change was made. And then on page two, um, trustee Verner requested that we look at uh, using stronger terminology instead of saying encouraging training, that we will actually provide training. So since we, we do do that as a district, we went ahead and, um, I just went ahead and changed that word to, we'll provide. Training for our staff and prevention curriculum-related topics such as confidentiality, addiction, depression, CODIS, but codependency, suicide, and others. Those were the actual, uh, only two requested changes. So if you have any other questions or further input, I'm happy to answer.
Laurel?
I just have a question about one of the changes where we went to illegal drugs, but a lot of the abuse of drugs is actually prescription drugs. And sometimes it's not even a borrowed prescription, it's the misuse of a prescription that's been given. So are we limiting it by saying illegal drugs? How should we make sure that we include um, all of those things? Or, I mean, even the misuse of cough syrup that's over-the-counter medication? How, how should we word that to make sure we're not excluding any of those substances?
Well, I, I would like to ask Mr. Pablakwas to, to join in on that conversation, but my perspective on that would be anytime you use a, a substance outside of the, the prescribed or intended means, it then becomes an illegal use of that substance. So that's the way I would read into that, but by all means, please let me know if I'm incorrect.
I think that's fine, uh, we, we could look at some additional language, illegal use or abuse.
Any other comments or changes? Seeing none.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen as the revised date for CCSD Policy five eighteen, drug, alcohol use and abuse. Were there changes? With, was it, with the suggested revisions.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Laurel. Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those approve? All those opposed? You have your policy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to number fourteen, discussion and possible action to approve newly proposed Policy two hundred, instructional plans. Second reading for possible action, Mrs. Fushon.
Thank you, Madam President. Again, Tasha Fushon for the record. This is the, uh, the new policy, two hundred, on instructional plans. We, if you recall from our last meeting, uh, we actually uh, took out a regulation on lesson planning because there was no corresponding policy and then transferred the information from that regulation into this policy. And so this is simply the second reading of that. The only recommendation um, at our last meeting was, um, it, it might be kind of hard to see, but in one of the bullet points, the one, two, three, or the fifth bullet point down, we didn't have a closed parentheses. So we've put that closed parentheses in there, but that was the only request to change. So if you have any other former uh, recommendations or questions, I'm happy to answer.
Any other questions? Nope.
No, I'd just like to, excuse me, stress again that, that teachers be given some time to complete the emergency lesson plans. Because it calls here for them to spend the first week of each school year and they may change. And so what I say is if they're not given some time, they maybe happen to work on them over the summer. Because the first week, as everyone knows, for teachers is pretty hectic. So I just encourage that.
Absolutely, I have that in my welcome back meeting notes with all of our principals to discuss that request.
Seeing no other discussion?
I'll make a motion. I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve July twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen as the adopted date for CCSD Policy two hundred instructional plans.
Motion by? Motion by Lupe, second by Mike. Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those who approve? All those opposed? And policy number two on your watch is on.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to number fifteen, discussion and possible action on the Nevada Association of School Board nominations to be considered for recognition during the two thousand and nineteen Annual Conference for Possible Action. And this is me. So last meeting, we discussed them. And I think the only one we had questions on. Oh, here. Was the Innovative Educator of the Year. So I think everybody's seen the letter for Mr. Hendrix. And you did yours on Campbell. Who's the other one?
I have, I have a letter from Mrs. Campbell, I have not distributed it, so I have that. I think, I believe trustee Crossman is editing for me.
Sorry, I missed the email with the one from um, Mr. Hendrix, so I don't know if that was when I was out of town or.
Oh, did I, I was the only one, I got it in two days, was I the only one that got it?
Yeah, I just forwarded to you for your review first.
Okay.
Because we couldn't, you couldn't email all the trust, another trustee shouldn't email all the other trustees.
Could submit two names, correct?
Can only do one, that's the problem. Oh, we had Bonnie Benson too. Wait, but we are still, we are still so far ahead of the game than we've ever been, I'm still proud of us. So, um, the next meeting is on the twelfth and these are due by the fifteenth. Thirteenth, oh yeah, that's a Monday, okay, so the thirteenth. So I think in order to proceed, we should go ahead and approve the ones that we have. Renee will distribute the letters for the three. So that gives you a little more time too, so that they can be in our packets too, because they'll be part of public record. And have, and then that will be the only one we have to vote on the thirteenth and the rest of these can already be sent in before then. So it's not a mad dash at the fifteenth, if that's okay with the board.
So the thirteenth is a board?
Thirteenth is a board meeting, which we would go over these through and vote who we would want to be our nominee. Okay, seeing none of that.
I was looking at it because I was thinking the district employee making a difference. Is that, is that limited to district-level employees? It seems like it is from here because it says nominate administrators at the elementary. Or is that the same language from?
We, we talked about that, I think, last time we had that discussion. It can be, but I think it, the nominees that we have are so. It can be, but I think the nominees that we have are so good, even though they're not administrators, that I think that we should submit them anyway. But you've served, both of you guys have served on the nominating committee. Does that come up when you're discussing the nominations?
You know what? A couple of times it has when I've been doing it where we've, we've looked at and looked at the nomination forms and realized, oh, this one isn't as clear as it could be. And sometimes we intend to fix it and sometimes we do and sometimes we don't, depending on how much it turns over. So that one makes me, because to me, a district employee making a difference, that would kind of be an open category to anyone in the district, even, even if it was a bus driver or, I don't think it should be limited to administrators. So I'll bring that up to NASB for the next, next awards season.
I think that would be a good idea because we've changed a few of them, but I think that would make, it'd be a really good change to bring up. Any other discussion? Okay, so for the record, I will go through these and then Renee was good enough to make us copies, our final copy, so we can all sign it now, so that we don't have to go into the office and sign them beforehand. Thank you, Renee. So we'll go through the list for the, the record, yeah. Yeah, she has the, she's keeping the one that we don't have. And if there's one here that we can't agree on, then she has a backup for that too. So if we have for the School Administrator of the Year, we're recommending Jason Zona. Everybody still okay with that? Oh, yeah. And Amy, there's two. I forgot. Okay. And Amy Robinson. Any other discussion or problems with those? I'm sending them down, sign them as we go here. District employee making a difference.
Madam President, do we need to vote on this first before we, does it matter?
I think you should vote on them and then sign technically.
Then we have the School District Employees Making a Difference and we get two nominations here and we have Carrie Pryor, Emmer, Miriam Torres. Oh, this is still mine. District Level Administrator of the Year Impacting Student Achievement, we're nominating AJ and Paul Johnson from White Pine. For Director of the Year, our very own Mike Walker.
I don't, I believe we were doing Dawn. Because I thought I was the new, new one or whatever.
Yeah, I don't think we're doing Mike. Because we can only do one. Okay. So we're going to do Dawn and it's from Story County. Mm-hmm, you have Dawn. So I'm just going to cross it out because you have Lyon. I'm still handing those to you. Veteran School Board Member of the Year, Joe, Mr. Joe Cassiobo. New School Board Member of the Year, Mike Walker. Individual School Board Member of the Year, me. By default because nobody else has been here as long. School Board of the Year is us, of course. Superintendent of the Year is Terry White from Douglas. An individual friend of K-12 Public Education is Fund Our Future. And then we're going to wait on Innovative Educator of the Year. Media Award for Outstanding Education Reporting in Television, Radio or Online Journalism, Carson Now. Media Award for Outstanding Education Reporting in a Print Journalism Forum is Pat Quinn Davis and Carson High's Newspaper. Local Governance Team of the Year, going for the second year in a row, that would be us. And the one we should win every year is the Board Secretary or Administrative Assistant of the Board Support Staff of the Year, Ms. Cortez. Because if we didn't have her, we would all be lost. So unless there's any discussion, more comments, go ahead and have a motion for those.
So I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees approve the Nevada Association of School Boards nominations to be considered as read by President Wilkie for the 2019 Annual Conference.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Lupe.
Just a question on that because we didn't have, we, we have to narrow it to one on the Innovative Educator of the Year. So are we not including that?
We are not including that in this motion.
Okay, great.
I did not read that one into the record. Any public comment? This is going to be the hardest part because we have so many great employees and administrators. To get down to one or two is incredible. So I appreciate you guys' hard work and I'm just so proud of the staff and the employees that we have in this district and be able to recognize them in this way. All those in favor? Motion, all those opposed? Motion carries. Make sure you sign them before you leave or otherwise we'll have to chase you down. Okay, moving on to number 16, discussion and possible action to authorize the superintendent or his designee to negotiate a non-binding letter of intent for possible purchase of the real property and improvements located at 1600 Snyder Avenue, Carson City, Nevada, for a price not to exceed $5,670 million and to tender a refundable earnest money deposit in the amount not to exceed $50,000 to be applied against the purchase price, with funding for the deposit to come from capital project funds and subject to such additional terms and conditions as the superintendent may agree in writing, including a reasonable period of feasibility study of not less than 120 days to order, conduct and evaluate such appraisal, environmental assessment, tests and inspections of the property and to obtain the public input and return to the board with a recommendation on the proposed use and whether, and whether and on what terms to proceed with the purchase of the property for possible action. Mr. Stokes.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I appreciate you reading that agenda item and I need to draw the board's attention to a necessary change. When this agenda item was put out, we identified 120 days for the feasibility study. That number has always been 90 days. And if the board takes any action on this tonight, you need to know that that number would not be 120 days, but in the current letter of intent that has been resubmitted to the seller, that number is 90 days. Are there any questions about this condition?
Go ahead.
I, I noticed that in the board packet and in the packet that was made available to the public, the actual document reflects the 120 days. In addition, the, the document recites that although there's a 90-day period, the district has the right to extend that for up to 90 additional days. So I think that adequate public notice has been given despite the technical glitch on the particular agenda item. So I think you can proceed tonight on the basis of what's before you.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Mr. Stokes?
Thank you, Madam President. So carrying on, if I could just recap kind of where we stand. At our last school board meeting, the trustees were apprised of the rejection of the original offer that the school district had made to the seller. As you recall, they had reduced this feasibility study that we had just talked about from 90 days to 60 days. They had also required that $25,000 of the earnest money be non-refundable should the district choose to not carry through with the purchase. And then there was also an increase in the asking price to $5.67 million, which was an increase of about 3%, which covered the realtor's fees for the transaction process. After meeting with the trustees and hearing feedback, I contacted the realtor and through him, we contacted the seller again and reiterated that the feasibility period had to at least be 90 days with that additional 90 days to receive study results or else there would be no deal. That's, that came across to me as a must-have item. And so that was, that was part of our negotiations back to the seller. We also let the seller know that we had to have that $50,000 earnest money as being able to be refunded in its entirety or that too would end the deal. We also knew that there would be an opportunity, which brings us to today, for the trustees to consider that increase in the asking price of the property, which again amounts to covering the costs of the, the realtor's fees. And then that official return, allowing us to have at least until the 25th of July to respond to the seller, which they were okay with these other items. And, and actually the document that you have in your packet has been signed by the seller based on those conditions. Now, I also want you to be aware that there were some other components to this letter of intent that did not exist in the original letter. So if you'll, if you'll bear with me, it was noted under item number one in the property portion of the letter of intent that the seller had obtained the property as a result of foreclosure and the seller's interest in the land is not by deed but by a land patent. And a land patent is a process that was used in the early part of our country where the properties being owned by the federal government, there was some portion or some process that had to be incorporated to transfer land ownership from the federal government to private industry or to private individuals. I'm thinking of the Homestead Act, for example, that, that would have been a transfer of land from the federal government to private individuals. In this particular case, the land patent came about to the original owner of the property when the BLM chose to provide this property for the purposes of a school or a church. And at that time, the land, the, the, the new owner of the property provided a 5% cost of that 10.2 acres at 5% of the then market value of the property. So, so I know this gets a little convoluted, but there's a question as to whether or not the land can actually be owned as your, your, your private residences, for example. You own the property under which your house sits on. In this particular case, there's a condition where once that trans, or that title is transferred to a new owner, which would be us should we choose to go forward with the purchase, then the BLM still owns the property. And so one of the things that we have to look at and, and is incumbent upon the seller as identified in this particular paragraph, that, that transference of the property has to be approved by the BLM to whoever buys the property next. And if that's the school district, they have to be assured that the function of the property will continue to be used either as a church or as a school. And of course, in our case, it would be as a school. So that's out of our hands. That's something that the BLM has to approve. Now, the seller believes that that's very doable because the property at one time was operated as a school. But still, that is a process that has to occur. Now, if the BLM elects not to make that decision, then the seller would have to pay the BLM 95% of the current market value of the property. And if you remember the discussion that we had about the property behind Carson High School, that Blackstone has said is part of their development for the schools, we figured that that property out of 10 acres would be about $3 million. So long and short of this discussion is that if the property can't, if the transfer of title can't be approved by the BLM, it's likely that the land part of this process would cost the seller about $3 million, which would then be added on top of the $5.67 million. So if that happens, if that happens, the district has the ability to call the, the property or the contract null and void. We would, we would have the ability to back out of the agreement at that time. I'm watching your faces and wondering if I should stop here and offer an opportunity for discussion or clarification.
Mr. Stokes, and I know this is unlikely, but not owning the land, you know, who knows what a future administration might decide what policy to enact? I mean, what type of liability would we have in that situation if we didn't own that land and we had a school which we've heavily invested in?
I, I think that we're going to have to see what it is exactly that we're going to be getting. My understanding of a land patent is a little different than what, what Mr. Stokes decided. There's an example of a land patent where the, next to the Senior Citizen Center where the Carson Health Building is, that was made available to the, actually Carson Hospital for use as a rehab facility. The hospital then sold that land to, or donated that land to the city. So the land can be transferred. I, I think that the issue in this particular case is really, well, it's obviously a seller's issue because it's my understanding that the actual seller in this transaction is not the school, but perhaps the mortgage holder. The mortgage holder pretty clearly does not operate, own or operate a school. So it's going to be incumbent on our seller to make an arrangement with the BLM that would allow the sale to go through. My guess is that the BLM doesn't want the property back, that the BLM would be quite pleased to see the property continue to be used as a school. But there's going to have to be some kind of documentation between the seller and the BLM over the status of the title. At the end of the day, my expectation as the attorney for the school district is that we would have the equivalent of a deed or a patent that said we own the property, however the property has to continue to be used as a school or for school purposes.
Mr. Walker, the other part of your question was what happens if the school district were to sell the property? I can only go from what I know about the history of the district and that is once we've obtained a piece of property, it's remained in our care without transference or trying to sell one of our properties.
Richard?
On the 95% of the fee that may need to be paid, the $3 million, did I understand that they may want that added to the cost of the property, seller? So we'd have to be paying $8 million?
So that will occur if the BLM cannot prove that the potential buyer, which would be the school district, is not going to use the property for a church or a school. But if that, yes, if that does occur, they would add that to the price of the real estate.
But I think you made it clear that that would avoid the agreement?
It, it gives us the option. Let's see. I'm just going to read that part. Mr. Pavlakas?
The, the document pretty clearly states the price to us is 5.67 and where the seller gets the money to clear title, that's up to the seller.
Any other questions at this time? Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Thank you. So the question tonight in front of the board is the same as- So the question tonight in front of the board is the same as it was several meetings ago, which is, there's a property that's in the city that was used at one time as a school and as a church that represents a certain possibility and opportunity to us to consider this property for expansion and to house students as a potential way to address some of the growth in our city. We would again be asking the board to allow us to go through this feasibility process and try to discover all of the conditions and the situations that would be advantageous, and also those considerations that might cause us to stop or to cease considering this property for potential purpose. There's a lot that needs to be done, everything from an environmental study to an appraisal to the conditions that we've talked about so far, where the BLM has to work out with the seller as to the transference of the property and any potential sale of the property. Of course, we would want architectural studies to make sure that water, sewer, electrical, all of the buildings can be added upon, make sure that they're up to code, check for asbestos, all of those usual and customary things, in addition to determining or bringing back to the board a potential use for the property, for use into what I would consider perpetuity for the benefit of the school district. So one of the things, if you do choose to use the motion that was listed in your packet, is you'll need to change that notice of a hundred and twenty days to ninety days. And then also, if you look at that sample of the letter of intent, at the top of the page, it lists July tenth, two thousand and nineteen as maybe a date to take notice of. I talked with Mr. Uhart, our realtor, and he said that the ninety days would not start from July tenth, it would start from the time that the two parties agreed on the letter of intent. So we have that additional time as part of our ninety days to do the feasibility study.
You know, I guess, I just have a question, Mr. Stokes, about if we have this potential property in this development behind Carson High School. I mean, would it be better served to just put our efforts into developing that property? There seems to be a lot of questions with this property that we don't know, and I feel like we're kind of being, we're trying to rush into making a decision. And so I'm just trying to get a sense from you of how important is this to you? Because in my mind, I'm thinking, well, why not just start fresh with the property that we're going to have in that development and go from there?
Trustee Walker, I can let you know that we've already received calls to the district office from some of the people who are moving into new developments, asking where they attend school. So one of the other considerations with looking at either new construction or remodeling existing properties is, we also know we're going to have to do some rezoning. We know we're going to have to modify the attendance zones for some of our schools. It would seem that the possibility of using the property at sixteen hundred Snyder Avenue should at least be looked into. The property down behind Carson High School, that has been identified as a school site, but that construction has not taken place. We're not seeing any movement on that property as of yet. We anticipate that it will happen. We know that there's growth coming from other sources, and if you recall the numbers that you saw on Mr. Maderos's slides, Portowick Bray, for example, has six hundred and thirty kids in it already. And so I think there really is an immediate need to look at some of the challenges that we're experiencing in the district from a growth perspective and how we're going to manage or deal with that growth.
You know, I've given this a lot of thought, and one of the things that concerns me is where are we going to get the money to staff it? And I know it won't be staffed right away, but at some point in time, it's going to have to be staffed. There's going to have to be computers, so it's going to impact Mr. Maderos. And we can't transfer a lot of staff, maybe some, but with our budget situation not improving in the next several years, I'm just concerned about where we're going to get the teachers, the custodial staff, and other employees that needed to run a school. And is that going to be part of the feasibility study? And if so, if you determine that it's not feasible to get the money to run a school, would that be reason to not go through with the sale?
All pertinent questions. Even if we build a new school, we'll still have to operate it. And so I think that's always going to be an issue. One of the things that happens under Nevada funding processes is that if you get more students, you get more money from the state as well. So it's not like it's going to be a negative, a completely negative draw on the system. So we will get additional revenue as additional people move to town and students enter the school district. Depending on how a new property is used will certainly have an impact on the number of new staff members that would be required. For example, if we were to have, and one of the ideas for the property was a sixth-grade center, so taking some of the pressure off of the middle schools at the sixth-grade level, we already have sixth-grade teachers employed in the school district. And so if we reduced staffing and students at our middle schools and created a place for a sixth-grade center, as it were, most of our teachers would already be hired. There would, however, would be support staff that would be required, but maybe not at the same level.
And I would just say to trustee Varner, I mean, if we have growth with or without that site, we're going to be required to educate those children and provide the supports necessary. So I mean, I think that that's just what we do.
Yeah, we have to put portables and put teachers in portables.
And I think some of that will kind of shake out as soon as we have some of the public input and we look into exactly what we might be able to do with this property a little.
President Wilkie, if I could, we haven't looked at this in a while, but we had a company some months ago do an analysis, a projection of enrollment over time based on developments and the expected kind of time of development. And so within that, and assuming there's no recession and things of that nature, seven years from now, they had the district's population increasing by about eight hundred students. So again, it's a projection, it's not perfect, but just the idea that given the developments there are, if they grow at kind of the expected rate, you'd have those kids. Now, they would be spread across all grade levels, right? So that gets back to looking at, as Mr. Stokes was saying, looking at rezoning, and you're looking at the different potential uses for some of these buildings, and that space behind Fremont as well, what are Carson High, you know, what do we do? Lots of possibilities, but I think that that growth is there. It's just that there's options we have with, as to how we kind of engage that growth.
Agree. Laurel?
I see this, basically, our first offer to the seller was rejected and they countered. And then there's been some discussion, and this is the second offer. We know a little bit more about what might be agreeable or what might not be, but it still has the terms that are favorable to us. There's a little bit increase in the purchase price, which I think that is still, the purchase price, when we get into this, if this offer is, this letter of intent is accepted, there may still be some negotiation that comes down the road on what the purchase price is and what actual title they will be able to transfer to us. So I see this as just the second step in it, sending them a second letter of intent and still looking into it. So the reasons for me thinking it was good a month ago are still here. So I would be supportive of this.
And really, the biggest cost is just staff time at this point in this. I mean, we get back our deposit, and we're not out that, but there is a lot of staff time that is going to go into this, so we do have to think of that cost aspect of it.
Lupe, did you have any questions?
I would echo what trustee Crossman indicated, that this proposal is more reasonable than the previous one. So I see that as a positive.
Any more discussion? Any public comment?
All to say for the record, I'm still skeptical. I mean, I'm just not sure that I'm fully in favor of this. I don't think there's harm in moving forward, but I think there's a lot of questions I still have, and I'm just not sure about, I'm not sure about it.
And I think most of those are, hopefully, a lot of those will be done, answered with a lot of the studies and the diving into the patent. And if there's any other ones that you have, you should take them to Mr. Stokes so that we can make sure in that ninety days that those questions will be answered either favorably or not favorably, but at least you'll have an answer. So, and I put that out to all the trustees, if you have questions that we haven't discussed here, to bring them up to Mr. Stokes so that him and staff can take care of those before we get to the end of the ninety days.
Yeah, I'd just like to go on the record, I guess, too, and agree with Mr. Walker. All support moving forward, but I do have a lot of questions, and hopefully, they can be answered, and it'll be favorable to the district if we do move forward with the purchase.
In likelihood, we got a fifty-fifty chance, we'll either go with it or we won't, so, but I think my possibility is, I know, my mathematics, A.J. My thought is, I'm the same as Mrs. Crossman and Lupe, is that we've discussed this a lot and looked at different things, and just think it's a possibility that I think we have to look at because of the growth option and the lack of land here to build and our lack of bonding to be able to build anything bigger. So I think that those possibilities, as we're holding the funds for the public, looking at these options, I think that that's definitely a consideration that we can't pass up looking at. So that's my few.
I'm wondering how soon we can get a committee meeting together, I guess, for public input, because I've been approached by several people and asking, you know, why do you guys want to buy this piece of property, you know? And so I think getting the public input's going to be very important.
I would agree, and I think that's been one of the things that I've discussed with Mr. Stokes, and he realizes that too, that, especially here in Carson, because that property will have other uses for the community, depending on which way it goes to. So we will get working on those.
And I would just add, Madam President, members of the board, if you do know individuals that have a distinct interest, please share their names with me. I'll reach out to them and invite them to be part of the discussion. We obviously will be using our bond oversight committee for part of this discussion. I've made a list of potential committee members, and we'll be reaching out to those folks as soon as I have a green light to move ahead.
And I would hope that you would add Mr. Jensen. Unfortunately, he couldn't stay for the, to talk about it at this agenda item, he has left. So if you would reach out to him and add him to that Jennings, since he did it during public comment, I'd appreciate that. Okay. Seeing none. Yeah, so I can get public comment going.
I move that the Carson City School District Board of Trustees authorize the superintendent or his designee to enter into a non-binding letter of intent for the purchase of the real property and improvements located at sixteen hundred Snyder Avenue in Carson City, Nevada, for a purchase price not exceeding five million, six hundred and seventy thousand, plus closing costs, and to tender a refundable fifty thousand earnest money deposit to be applied towards the purchase price, with funding for the deposit to come from the Capital Projects Fund, subject to additional terms and conditions, as the superintendent may agree in writing, including a period for feasibility, for a feasibility study of not less than ninety days, to order, conduct, and evaluate such appraisals, environmental assessments, tests, and inspections of the property, and to obtain public input and present a recommendation to the board on the proposed uses and whether, and on what terms to proceed with a purchase of the property.
Seconded by anyone? Somebody needs to second it.
I'll second it.
Okay. Thank you, Lupe. If anything left, just so we can discuss it. Any other discussion by the board? Any public comment? Nobody's moving. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Three, two. Okay, we'll go forward.
Thank you.
Moving on to number seventeen, approval of consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mike, second by Laurel. Any discussion on the motion? Any public comment? Seeing none, all those approve?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Informational items? I'm guessing that we have the list of back-to-school meets and greets, as everybody saw. And Renee says she'll send them electronically to us tomorrow. Thank you for that. Any questions on the informational items? Seeing none. Moving on to number nineteen, request for future agenda items. Mike?
You know, Mr. Stokes, one of the things I'm wondering about is how the changes to pre-K funding has impacted the district. I haven't heard anything about that, and I'd be interested in an update on that. So hopefully, we'll have some information.
Anyone else? Okay. Next agenda item, next meeting, we'll have the Innovator Educator on it. Other than that, if you think of anything in between, you know, Mr. Stokes' door is always open to put them on there. Okay. Seeing none. We will move to number twenty, an adjournment. Thank you very much, and we will see you in two weeks.